I guess, sorry, this is my first time starting a meeting as a chair, so I'm gonna fumble a little bit. So, okay, at any point, a non-public session may be called in accordance with Chapter 91A, colon, 3, 2, I guess. All right, so let's start with the minutes. So, the March 16th public meeting minutes, you guys got those? Does anybody have any amendments?
I have a couple of minor edits under Section 9 that I can just...
Well, we would need to tell us what they are, and then we'll approve them.
Okay.
We have to approve them as amended. So what are your changes? Oh, I don't have them. Oh, thank you. Okay, perfect. Yep, just a couple little, like, missing parcels and letters just. So do, so all move that we approve the minutes, the public minutes as amended? Okay. You all vote yes?
Yes.
Sorry, I was leading you guys. Okay, so now the non-public minutes. Does anybody have any amendments to this? Okay, so all move that we approve the non-public meeting minutes as well?
Yeah, I can second that.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Okay, so how do you vote?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so new business. We have Revision Energy here. Hi, how are you? Great, how are you? Good. Thanks for having us. I am quite the first on the agenda. My name is Rachel Eads. I have Dan Pack in the team. Dan is actually a founder of Revision Energy. I'm one of the founding members of the team that works closely with our commercial teams, so schools, municipalities, nonprofits, businesses, et cetera. We've had the pleasure of being at your school a couple of months ago, on St. Patrick's Day, actually, to look at the site. And so I want to take the next 20, 25 minutes or so to talk to you through a solar energy proposal. Time for questions at the end. We have a couple of handouts with details, start big picture, and then get into the nitty-gritty around cost and rate performance, all that kind of stuff. But to start out, we'll start with inspiration, which is the largest school array in state of New Hampshire, Dover High School, one that we were proud to install a couple of years ago. Your school isn't quite this big.
Our school is.
Yeah.
Quite an expansion on Kensington there.
Yeah. Yeah. But just to show, you know, something we're certainly very proud of, and sort of the scale of the ambition of something we can achieve similarly here in New Hampshire. So just a little bit of background, you know, who are we, why are we here? We are two of the about 350 co-owners of Revision. As I mentioned, Dan's one of our founders, but in 2017, we actually became an employee-owned company. So we're looking at two owners of the company right here, along with our other teammates. We've installed over 12,000 clean energy systems in the region, mainly Massachusetts and New Hampshire, since 2003. And we're really proud to be number one-rated rooftop in solar in New England. In addition, we're being employees, we're also a E Corp. So third-party has evaluated us, and it helps us achieve our goals, not just to be a sustainable business for our own co-owners, but goals beyond that, such as the environment and other people. So speaking of that, I just want to start by sharing our mission as a company. So Revision Energy exists to empower community to overcome the environmental, economic, and social inequity caused by fossil fuels. So our kids and grandkids can enjoy doing with clean air, water, and land, just like we do. And one of the great things about working with an organization like Kensington Elementary School is that we work with mission-aligned partners. So just from a quick review of your website, I know it's important to you because you share as part of your mission and your vision. And the great thing is, a project like this, working together, it brings both of our visions together in terms of what we want this community to become, particularly for the next generation. So for you guys, prioritizing a Kensington Elementary School community, including families, staff, and students, that prepares the students of the school to be contributing members of the ever-changing world by becoming independent life-won learners. And also, we know that you believe in making students' pennies aware of their place in the world. What better way to do that than building on the tiny solar array you have up front to actually be walking the walk and producing clean electricity that covers the entire school's electricity load? So just briefly, a couple of things just on our industry awards and honors. Like I said, super proud of all this, but don't need to dwell on that for purposes today. I'll send around this deck if you still want to check any of it out. We're also honored to work with a number of the biggest businesses in the region, along with a number of nonprofit solar partners, including a number of schools of all different shapes and sizes, large, small, for-profit, nonprofit, colleges, down to daycares, and most solar schools, things like that. So a lot of experience working with similar types of organizations, and also lots of local municipalities, towns and such around the region. And finally, while I'm thinking big picture, I just wanted to share one of the reasons we're here. Obviously, it's to achieve that vision and build a world that we want all of our kids to see. But it's also about the realities of the day-to-day of running an organization like the school. It is the practicalities of things like energy cost. This chart shows the cost of electricity in New Hampshire over the past 20 years, so 2002 through 2022. And as you can see, the chart only goes one direction. It looks like this, yeah, but you look at the nation, you know, going back as long as you want. The cost of electricity is on the rise. You guys follow to the commercial, which is the dark blue line there. Another objective of this project is going to be helping you reduce costs and achieving certainty in where your electricity is coming from, not only just clean generation, but also being able to control that by literally having a power plant on your roof. So to get into some of the details on the design and engineering of the solar project for Kensington Elementary School. This is a shot of the building from the air, just from Google, and what it would look like with some solar panels. This is an engineer's rendering of a 93.6 kilowatt solar array on the roof of this building where we are here. It would be 205 panels, 205 solar panels. They're about my size, my height, like this, up on the roof, utilizing both the southwest pitched roof as well as the flat roof areas, including the gym roof, which we know is due for replacement, as well as the flat surface roof, the flat roof there. So combined, 205 panels for inverters. The inverters would convert the DC electricity into AC, which is what we use in all of our facilities. And during the site walk, we talked about a couple of locations for those.
Sorry, what were those green circles?
Sorry, those are trees in the modeling software.
Got it, okay.
Probably should have deleted those from the imaging. But we use those to model the shade of the trees. As you can see, there aren't panels in this corner of the roof, because that tree's actually big enough, in the summer, it produces significant shade, and we want to make sure you're getting the best out of those from the panels. Same as, like, there's no panels in this area there because of the shade of the higher gym roof. We appreciate it, but yeah. Those are little engineering trees. So we did our site visit on March 17th. After the LACRAFons that got up there mischief, we saw new, you know, remaining signs with the green footprints. But things seemed to be back in order by the time we got there. And like I said, it was brilliant to see the tiny little panels out front doing lighting for your sign, just a real, you know, indication of kind of where you guys are at in your clean energy journey. Starting to talk about it, it's super visible for the kids and families who come to the school. So a great starting point in terms of progressing into full-on clean energy generation on-site. We went up and looked at the roof, both sections of the flat roof. We even found a bird's nest in the corner there. Hopefully, none of those on the panels. But we always find kind of cool, fun things in these site visits. And so not only looking at suitability of the roof for locating solar panels, but also the inverters, like I mentioned, they can go, we could have a couple of locations indoors or outdoors, such as the side of the building, kind of away from the primary areas where the kids are going to be. Could be a great site for them. I'll show you a couple images later on of inverter sites on other projects we've done. And then we evaluated just the electrical infrastructure here in terms of your meter and the sizing and all of that, because we are building an electrical plant here. So I want to make sure we can interconnect it and match it to the load of the building. Final step was we evaluate your utility bills. So thank you very much for signing them, including your bills today. Thank you. Thank you, the whole team, for talking about it. I know it's a bunch of bills, so fair play to you guys for managing all that continuously. But just as a reminder, so we looked at those to pull out your current kilowatt-hour usage. But just as a reminder, you guys do have two bills, but in general, most energy users in the state, about half of your bill is the supply portion, and half is the load rate transmission. And it's no different for you guys, 48% of your costs coming from that supply portion with your third-party supplier constellation, and about half coming from the delivery, which is the bill that comes straight from Unitil. So after gathering all that info, we were able to build a production report of what this array would produce. And split it up into two here, one looking at the flat roof sections and one at the pitched roof, because they're actually at different angles. So on a flat roof, we arrange the panels at a 10-degree tilt. So I have this one behind, so they don't shade each other. Whereas the pitched roof is at a different orientation, spacing southwest, but also at a steeper pitch on the actual roof. So two different models. But basically, this is using industry-leading software called Helioscope, thus designed to model solar production, and it uses 30 years of weather data, local weather data. So the great part about this is, we know going into the project what your array is going to produce, including our lovely New England winter conditions. So as you can see on this graph here, that is sort of tiny, but January to December, solar production for a month follows a bell curve. Longer daylight hours in the summer, you produce more solar, less in the winter. Again, that's already building in snow. So you don't even worry about getting up on the roof and clearing any snow off your panels. We know it's going to snow, and we actually hope to keep it that way by preventing the effects of climate change. So that's all built into the model, and it's one of your biggest sources of losses. So Dan, I can send this on so you can see in detail, but a little doughnut chart there just shows system losses, the biggest of which is called soiling, which is basically snow cover in our case. So that's the flat roof section. Exact same production report for modeling the pitched roof section, like I said, different angles, slightly different insulation hitting them. And what that sun is actually hitting are these major components. These are just examples of what we would put on your array. So I modeled this using Q cells, one of the brands of solar panels that we have. Like I said, pretty big panels. The flat ones are rated for 480 watts. So that's actually what collects the power from the sun. Inverters, as I mentioned, they transfer that into AC. So that's what some inverters look like. We have our racking system, again, slightly different for the flat roof section versus the pitched roof. Power optimizers, actually, on the back of the panels. I don't know if any of you were involved in solar years ago, but it used to be, you know, something happens to one panel, they all go down. Whereas now, each one has a little optimizer. So if there's an issue with one panel, there's still snow covering one. All the other panels can do their thing, and that one panel will come out next, which is independent.
Like those Christmas lights that one goes down, the little strands.
Exactly, exactly. We've solved the Christmas light problem.
Great.
It's still involved in optimizer. Another thing to note on this page is to talk just briefly about warranties. The panels, inverters, racking, they're all warranted for 25 years. Inverters, slightly less, they last, warranty's going to be 12 to 20. We model in replacement of the inverter about halfway through the system's life. So that's kind of already included in the cash flow. And then in terms of monitoring systems, again, I know my parents have a ground mountain ray from 13 years ago, and it's a little battery-powered monitor. We've come a long way. Now, there's all these web-based monitoring systems from the inverter companies. So education's a huge component of this, and I know something you guys will be excited to get involved with. We've seen a lot of schools, you know, you can stick just your standard monitor screen, and it'll be showing what you're producing that day. It's all web-based, so like, super easy to share and help with the education piece. It can be an app on your phone, or hosted on the school website, so you can go and check, oh, what are our panels making today? So just to show you what this would look like from some real-life examples. These are sample rooftops of what I say when I mean a flat array. The roof is flat, the panel is not, they're tilted to those 10 degrees, and they're ballasted. So we aren't penetrating the roof surface that ballast, and the kind of lines of all the panels helps hold them down. So the great news is you are replacing all this roof surface, so it'll be suitable to hold extra kind of 5 to 7 pounds per square foot that the solar array would add versus a pitched roof, where the racking is obviously not ballasted, it's actually adhered to the surface. You guys have shingles there, which is great, it's in great shape. And so the racking will be horizontal, the panels will be oriented in portrait, side by side. Here's a sample of those inverters that I was talking about. This one here should probably likely wouldn't look like on that back wall of the school. You guys only have four, so not quite so many. But that's a bit of a different situations. Again, they're rated for both indoor and outdoor placement. All right, so in terms of what it takes to put something like that together, this is just a sample of construction timeline. We don't want to put in too much detail today, we're just to give you guys an idea. The top sections are all around utility interconnection. That can sometimes take a few months. These projects on average are kind of taking around eight to 12 months, but the actual install time is only a matter of a few weeks. And again, it's not inside the school building, it's on top of it. So we can work, you know, with you guys on the schedule, like we've done a lot of schools, and don't need to be disruptive to the school. Right at the point that we're turning it on, we would need to turn off the power, but they can be arranged after school hours to do that bit. The final piece from design and engineering is what happens once it's up there. The great thing about solar as a technology is there aren't any moving parts. So that means less opportunities for things to go wrong. But with a power plant on your roof, you want to make sure it's all working appropriately. So we do have operations and maintenance programs. We have the whole team who look after that. And we'll talk shortly about how to finance this. And the great part is, in a PPA arrangement, the owner of the array, the investor, actually takes care of the operations and maintenance upfront. So it's something you wouldn't need to worry about. But later on, if you choose to buy the system, we recommend that you do at least go with the basic operations and maintenance, just to make sure everything's working okay, nothing spot problems before it even happens. But in general, one of the great things about solar is it is a long-lived technology. You know, we're talking 40 years commercial lifespan for these panels up there with very little maintenance if you just check it on them. And that's a summary of operations and maintenance. Again, it's totally optional, but it is a service that we provide, because you know, we do already with these projects from very concept all the way through engineering, procurement, constructing it, and then also helping you maintain it afterwards. All right, so that is the design of the project. But everyone must know, of course, what's the cost? First, I want to talk about the structure of financing a solar project for a nonprofit. As you guys know, you don't pay taxes. A lot of the, well, all the incentives actually from the federal government around solar projects are geared towards tax-paying entities, so businesses and individuals who have a tax liability. So it can present a challenge for schools who want to go solar. They're tax-deduct entities, so an investment tax credit is kind of no good to you guys, because you don't have that tax liability in the first place. It also can be obviously a high upfront cost, and outright ownership might not be the best option in terms of just long payback times. So the solution to that is something called a power purchase agreement. And what that means is basically the host, so Kensington Elementary School, licenses the roof for solar to a mission-aligned investor. The investor's the one who pays for building it, they own it, at least for the beginning, and operate the array, including any of that operations and maintenance I mentioned. And you would purchase the power from the investor at a rate that we talk about in a minute. But the idea is that you save money versus the utility. And then, beginning in year six, after the investor's had a chance to take those credits, you have the option to purchase the solar array. You can purchase it in year six, or seven, or eight, or nine, or 10, or any year. The idea is that you do. The school will get the best savings once they own the array. But it is flexible. You know, the worst-case scenario is that you are in a PPA agreement, and you buy a reduced-cost electricity for the charity of the PPA. Best case is you build it into your budget for the next six years, and then are able to buy the array when it first becomes available at year six. And then that's just literally free supply of your kilowatt-hours from the sun. So to get a bit more detail on that structure, there's basically two entities involved in the PPA. You have your investor, and you have the school. So Revision Impact Investors, they're essentially investors who are mission-aligned with what we do. So they're willing to take basically less of return than your standard investor out there. They're doing this for all the reasons. They want to see more clean electricity. They want to help bring clean energy to places that, you know, wouldn't traditionally be accessible, like a school, for example, who can't take those tax credits. We raise that capital and form a solar LLC with the investor partner. And you guys are contracted with us to design and install the solar array that we described. The investor would own up to the array for those five years. And they're recouping that investment through being able to take the tax credit depreciation through the energy sales to you guys, you're paying them instead of the utility. And then also any rebates or rec sales. Not super important just right now. But they're able to pass on those savings to you guys by selling the array in year six or later. Again, optional, could be year seven, could be year 10, could be never. We hope it's year six. But like I said, worst-case scenario, you buy lower-cost electricity, you also fix that rate, and after 25 years, the array would be decommissioned by the host. You can also extend that contract. Like I said, we're talking 40-year commercial lifespan for these products, so you could add five, 10 years onto it. From your perspective, the other side of the PPA agreement, you would be licensing your roof to the Impact Investor as the host of the solar array. You'd sign your PPA contract with Impact Investor using a national template, so drafted by their great organization that works on clean energy projects like this. You'd be producing your solar electricity that you produce on-site, be purchasing it from the investor with the option to buy the array, said year six. And the way to really maximize your savings is to become the owner, so that would be the intention. Like I mentioned, some towns or schools would budget in for that every year, trying to get to that capital cost, so they're ready to buy it in year six. But events of taking it year seven, eight, it's certainly impossible at every stage there. This is a little about who our impact partners are. We know there's a member of the community who's super interested in becoming your impact partner, so that's something quite special that not every school or organization has. So that also might open us up to some more flexibility. We've modeled this based on a standard investor. But like I said, you have some, and also an investor here in Kensington that might open up some extra options in terms of affordability of the project. All right. Dan, you'll pass those out. So Dan's just going to hand out what I'm going to show you on the slides here, just so you have it, to take home with you. We often read the numbers, because there are a lot of numbers. Well, I will, talking script, what I have on the screen here is the same as what you have in your hands. The first page is the summary sheet. So you see at the top, you have the design summary that I showed, showing the annual generation of the array. So in a PPA, the best part is those two first lines, zero and zero. Upfront cost of the school is nothing, the operations and maintenance cost of the school is nothing. Year one PPA rate per kilowatt-hour. In this model, again, working with your investor partner, this is the first draft. We can discuss that PPA rate and what, you know, this person's willing to take as an investor return. But if we're looking at 12 and a half cents, that's your all-in PPA rate for your electricity. We built an escalator, starting in year two of 2%. If we go back to that slide I showed with New Hampshire cost of electricity, those costs are around 3% year-on-year for the last 20 years. So that escalator is slightly less. PPA term could be five to 25 years. And then I'll skip a line there to just say the upfront cost. So what's being financed by our investor partner? The full cost of the array is that $271,335. And if you guys bought it in year six, at the moment, fair market value is estimated at $170. So basically, a hundred-grand discount. We can't lock in that price in advance, just from buyer's rules, you can't actually set that price. It's at fair market value. We can give you an estimate of what it would be, which is around $170. And if you skip to the next section down, under PPA product savings revenue, remember, you're getting a lower rate in your electricity versus the utility, even while the investor owns it. So those savings in the first five years in the PPA add up to $12,000. So if you did buy it in year six, again, optional, subtracting those savings already in the first five years, the buyout would be $158,941. If you did own the array and wanted an operations and maintenance contract, it'd be around $1,000 a year. And then over the term of the PPA, assuming, again, worst-case scenario, you couldn't buy it out, something happened, it remains with the PPA investor, you're still accumulating savings of $114,000 just based on that lower locked-in electricity rate.
For how many years, what is the term?
The term of PPA we've put in here in the model is 25 years.
25, okay.
Yeah. But again, it can be extended, it can be written for shorter, but we modeled it at 25. So the net savings in 25 years with buying it year six would be $230,000 for the school. And over the commercial lifespan of the project, that 40-year net savings, all the way up to $644,000. So just to show that in a graph, this is the same information that's on the bottom of your Page 1 that we handed out there. The dark blue line is upfront purchase, so say you just, the school wants to go out, straight buy it in cash, return your investment around year 15. The orange line shows the PPA for year six buyout, so we have no cost to you up to year six. Then you buy the array, and then around year, I think it's 13, returns to investment, everything from there on out is just straight savings. And then the term PPA. So again, no more costs, just going to just be a slightly lower rate out to the end of 25 years. And for those who like bar graphs, we have it in another way. This is showing the long-term cost of electricity. Again, this is the bottom right of Page 1 that I handed out to you. Just showing the cost per kilowatt-hour. So comparing what your cost of electricity would look like if you're looking at first come, PPA, buying out at first opportunity. Second, in your worst case, you weren't able to buy it, stayed with the investor. And finally, a cash purchase of solar. Compare that to the utility. The black bar showing just utility costs from Unitil. It's baseline Unitil default supply, who's your supplier, $14 and a half cents. That's if it didn't go up over 25 years, which we saw the term at the beginning. Utility prices only go one direction, unfortunately. So if we built in a 2.5% escalator, utility costs would be 25 cents all-in versus solar, $7.5 cents. That just gives you some perspective over the term. And finally, what's that going to mean in terms of your generation on-site? Well, the great news is, an array to that size, 93.6 kilowatts, would produce pretty much 100% of your days, 97% of your current consumption. Just note on the kind of phasing and timing of it, the blue bars there are your consumption per month. So you site tip in the summer up to your school, so you don't have as many kilowatts in here in the summer. Solar generation does peak in the summer, but the good news is that you guys, your array's sized under 100 kilowatts, basically, you're considered a small customer generator and are able to net that monthly with the utility. So at the end of the month, you're either credited, or you have a bill for the supply portion of your electricity based on whether you overproduced or have to buy more from the grid.
If, I'm sorry, if we overproduce, it's like a credit?
Exactly.
The meaning is why we're actually using the electricity.
Exactly. Yep. So the final thing is, we don't want you to keep all these great savings or great farmal benefits to yourself. We want to help you share them with the wider school community, with your parents, with the staff, with the people of Kensington, and also all across the state and region, if you want. So just a few examples. We do, we love getting the public involved, we love getting the local town officials, state legislators all involved in the project, help grow the energy here in New Hampshire. Done some great things with media, happy to work with you on that. We have a great marketing team. EV charging, we do do EVs. I was not part of the project here, but I'm looking at something you're considering for the school, always something to talk about. And finally, around monitoring. I mentioned ease now with everything, you know, being digital, and able to put up on a monitoring screen or on boards, you know, what you've achieved in terms of... Actually, I just pulled it out here. So annual CO2 reduction from the proposed array under roof. You could pull out little nuggets like equivalent to greenhouse, gas emissions from 16 gas-powered, passionate vehicles taken off-road for a whole year, equivalent to diverting CO2 emissions from 8,533 gallons of gasoline. All these kind of pullbacks you could share with your community. And then finally, education. You guys are a school, it's what you do. We are really lucky to have a really strong education component in our own offering. We have this cute little creature there, Sun Squatch, that we use with our kids' programs and a tiny climate classroom. That's the one you're making its debut this Earth Day weekend. All those kind of resources. We've done some really neat partnerships with schools in the past. We'd love to come in, talk to the kids, bring the tiny climate classroom, bring the joy, Sun Squatch. the joy of Sun Squatch, and really make sure the kids are just as proud as we would be producing, you know, we want electricity on site. That's it from me. I don't know, Dan, do you wanna add anything to the summary there?
Oh, good, I don't need this. You did a great job, yeah.
Right. So I know it's probably a lot, but what questions do you guys have, ones popping up?
Every time I had a question, the next slide answered it, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, one question I have, what about insurance costs? Like, would this typically be something the school would insure, meaning the panels themselves?
Great question. Dan, you probably have done more logistics than I have.
Yeah. For ownership, it is the responsibility of the third-party owner to ensure that if you bought and owned it or simply died on it, then you would be to add that to insurance.
So for those first six years?
Well, well, yeah, so if we, if we owned it, we would, but if we participated in any of those programs where we're paying an investor, would we still have to?
No, the investor covers that additional insurance requirement.
How, how often would you expect to see damage to any of these panels in this area? Right, like whether it was a hailstorm or, you know, after a bad winter storm or something like that, I just don't have a good sense for that.
Yeah, I thought you had some good stat about how fast a baseball would have to be thrown in the panel to break it.
The panels are designed to withstand one-inch hail at a certain rate. Yeah, we'll use a better one, but, yeah, there's really not much damage to modules, especially when they're up in the roofing out of the way. If there's gonna be an issue with a module, we're gonna catch it in the first few months, and, you know, it's under warranties, get swapped out, replaced. But once they're up there, producing, they're producing. The failure points in a PPA array is the inverter, that's what's doing all the work, and that's what Rachel mentioned, we model the cash flow, they get 12-year warranties to begin with, but we model a replacement over the life of the system for the inverters.
Yeah, I wanted to actually ask about that. You had said that, and I just wanna understand, is that, you said that they, it's 12, the warranty is a 12-year, 12 to 20-year warranty, but you said at some point in there, they're gonna be replaced, and that's covered in, in this, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I built it, so Page 3 of your little packet there has just like a full cash flow, so we just get, for which column, and there's, one of the columns there is like no cost, and then there's like probably eight grand thing written in there. That's the inverter replacement.
Okay.
Essentially, yeah, the lifespan of the inverters is shorter than the lifespan of the panels, so in terms of you guys knowing exactly what to expect from a cost perspective over that 25 years, we're like, you need to expect to replace your inverters.
Okay.
In terms of warranties, as we have in the inverters under 12 years, it'd be under their manufacturer warranty.
Okay.
But because they're all warranted for that number of years, we're kinda like, you do expect to replace them?
And then, I'm sorry, when we, when you usually, the warranty goes till 12 years, and then when are they usually?
Yeah, I think it's like, what's in any of 21?
Oh, 25, then?
You can actually buy warranty extensions up to 20 years. We don't normally do it, just because of the cost to buy a warranty extension. At that point, might as well put the money towards the new inverter in years.
Yeah, okay.
So that is an option.
And then, it said operation and maintenance costs after buyout, and then it says per year, optional. What does that mean? What does optional mean?
Yeah, you don't have to do an ONN contract with us.
Oh, oh, meaning that you guys would be the ones to do that, I see, I understand, thank you.
Yep, yeah, yeah, we do that with my service team, but it's not required.
Got it, okay.
In the ONN package, what it does is it's like, depending on the package you pay for, it's weekly monitoring, monthly monitoring, it's guaranteed, turn times, like, we'll be here in less than 24 hours, but it's also annual inspections, like, we'll be doing voltage testing on the strings and the inverters, make sure everything's working, peak performance, and then you get an annual report, depending on the package you buy.
Who sets the rate in the PPA agreement between you and the investor? Is that something that's negotiable, is it something that's pretty standard for you guys? That we would pay the investor per, for the usage?
Yeah, so, also, Dan, feel free to elaborate, but that PPA would be agreed upon, upon contract signing. So you'll, again, like, one thing this does is it takes away the risk and volatility in electricity prices, so you'll know what it is, it'll be in your contract. In terms of the rate that we've modeled in here, like, we took this as if it was just a standard investor, you know, does a power rate of return that one of our standard investor partners would accept, you guys are kind of the special case. So it's highlighted in yellow there, because it's, I mean, this is a draft proposal, even if you wanna add to that in terms of?
Yeah.
You're answering my question, I don't need to know exactly, I was more asking because we are kind of a unique case, if that's something that's standard, that probably get a contract review law, if that's something that, like, would be discussed or?
Just how, yeah, just how Rachel explained it. We presented this as if we go up to our other impact investors that we know we can get placed.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll come in and bid that rate of return, which is, oh, mid-single digits is gonna be suffice. But again, it, it's not just only the PPA rate, it's the buyout as well. Because buyout in the contract, it's safe for our market value, you could actually have an impact investor that might wanna donate the buyout. We don't know.
Right.
We, we take this as like, we wanna come here, present the option, make sure that there's interest. And then we will take that back, finalize a design and a price, a build price, and then go have that conversation with the investor. You know, one particular investor or a few, and then really dial in what those, what the terms and conditions can be.
I think I'm missing something, you guys all seem to know the investor.
We do. Yeah, Dan, we do.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, that's what I was, I don't remember, I don't remember that, but I, but that's what I was thinking, probably was that.
Yeah, and this was just based on conversations?
Yes.
We've had in the past, I don't wanna make any assumptions.
Yes, nope, I just wanted to, I just wanna make sure I was thinking, right there.
And the good news is you do have a perfectly wordable project, like, local investor, not as in like any other impact investors would be happy to, to get on board with a project like this for school in New Hampshire. So, yeah, it's not contingent on that, but yeah, that's kind of cool.
And is that like the two options that you showed up on the screen? It seemed like you have a group of impact investors that you might recommend, and then there's another option that would be kind of what we're talking about here, like, what called a local impact investor?
Yeah, exact same process, but yeah, your local investor, like, wants to be particularly involved in this project, but in terms of the PPA structure, that's all the same regardless.
Okay, so it's like the same PPA structure, just a couple of options.
We just have a unique case, you weren't here when that was, when that information was given to us, yeah.
Can you just, one, last year, we had put aside money to do a cooling air conditioning project in this building for summer, but when the unit tells come out, they determined that we did not have enough electrical outage to be able to support any further electrical outlets, especially air conditioning units going through. How would a project like this be able to support that, so in the future, we could add on other amenities?
Yeah, absolutely, I suppose from future, the good news is you have some roof space we haven't touched, so in terms of a phase two, expanding as your load increases, certainly there is some more space for solar. In terms of the sizing, the electric, electrical infrastructure, there are some variables that we, we wanna go, have answered, for example, your transformer size, outside those are unlabeled, so we'd wanna double check that with the utility company, but it's size at the moment to match your current load.
Current load, okay.
Yeah. Anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I think what the question you're really getting to is, will this help, will this allow you to add additional load based on the current infrastructure? And the answer is no. You can think of, right now, you've got a certain sized pipe that's coming into the school, that electrons are flowing, this array would be designed to make sure that the, if the building shut down, the array was still producing, that sized pipe going back out to the grid is, will handle that backflow. You need to still size your electrical infrastructure for the load, assuming that the PV is not producing. That's how the utility, or any, any electrician that's looking at a load calculation will look at it. In theory, when the system is live, and you're, you're producing electricity here, you're reducing what you're bringing in, but you just can't, it just can't guarantee this happening every 30 or 15 minutes during, you know, peak. You gotta, you know, it might be covered in snow for a month, and you're just relying on existing infrastructure, so it still has to be sized. You'd have to upgrade in order to add load.
Yep, okay.
And if you did that, like as Rachel was saying, there's plenty of room for expansion to, if we still wanted to match 100%.
You said the, the kind of model that you have, this is about 97%, do you see that decreasing with the age of the panels at all, does that stay pretty consistent?
Yeah, it's a great question. We have modeled in a D rate of half a percent every year, which is basically the modules get half a percent less efficient, and we have it at about 82%, take off half a percent every year, so that's already modeled in.
Okay, to the, like, saving, overall savings.
Exactly, yep.
Perfect, that's great.
If we had, if, if, if we were doing this, and at some point, we decided we did want to add more so that we could increase the load and do air conditioning or something like that, how would that then work? It's not, is it, again, finding an investor to, or is it the kind of thing where like, a lot of the work has already been done, we're just adding a few bits of machinery? I mean, how, how does that work?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were saying, I thought you were saying later we can expand.
I think we have to keep the load, the air conditioning, the green, they have to change the infrastructure.
Oh, we'd have to expand what we have here.
Yeah, I know, we gotta.
So I sized this to match what you have, correct?
Yes, that's okay, I, I thought you were saying we would have to add, yes.
But in theory, if you upgraded that, you could, you know, you got more roof space, that, the upgrade, so that's, yeah.
We really want the air conditioning.
Yeah, I bet.
We were so excited, we thought it was.
That was the thing that we had, yeah, okay, all right. All right, I was thinking, yeah, okay, I, I don't understand how like, I was, okay.
Yeah, you'd have to size, just through analogy, the pipe coming in.
Yeah.
And the infrastructure there.
Yeah, I, I understand.
You've got 300 amp, 208, 208 volt, three-phase service.
Yeah.
So that might have to go to 600 amp or 800 amp, so slightly larger to feed the rest of the circuits.
So would this happen after the roof is replaced?
Yeah, great, great. And also, how old is the roof and the other sections?
Yeah, we, when we did the site walk, yes, we talked about replacing our roof and making sure whatever new materials we were putting down was gonna be most beneficial if this project went forward, just as far as material. And then the structure also of the other roofs, because we've replaced every other roof, at least in the last eight years since my tenure, so the roof was the last one to be done, so they're all relatively new.
And one of the reasons for, because we had an option to put it on the southeast roof or the southwest, we chose southwest. Production's very similar, but southwest just more for visibility as the kids pull in, the parents, like, boom, there's a solar array, because you're not gonna see the ones on the flat roof as much.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that. That, and those trees out there are only gonna get bigger over time, and it was like they were planted for a reason, so it's kinda, they're shading up the array.
Okay, great.
This is probably a really obvious, but, but pales can be removed if you need to, like, do any work on a roof or a, like, they're not, like, you can access the roof that needs to be worked on right here.
Yeah, so we, as part of kind of the rules, we would allow setbacks around anything that needs to be accessed, like any of the units you have up there, so if someone did need to get up there and do any maintenance on them, you don't wanna be removing them, I mean, ideally, there's up there producing the power for you, but, but yeah, in theory, they are removable.
But like, a roof will have to be replaced at some point, so I'm just thinking about, like, does that add any cost to, like, a roof replacement if you have to go out there and remove solar panels?
Yeah, the idea is the roof wouldn't need, wouldn't need to be replaced in the life of this array, and like you said, everything's under eight years old, which is a good question to check, and we talked about on, on the site, I said, the general roof will be brand-new. So yeah, wouldn't it, it's big game to replace the roof during the commercial lifespan of your array?
A lot of times you can re-seal, reseam the roofs, but to answer your question, if it did need to be replaced for some reason, then yes, it would add some cost, because you have to remove and then reinstall. It can only be restored, or it's removed, restored by licensed electricians, so there's costs to that, yes.
All right, thank you very much, yeah. Anything else? No? Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah.
No, no problem. You have property that you've been using, if you're to try that around, and if you think of questions afterwards, feel free to give me a shout, Dan, shout. Well, thanks, thank you, thank you, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, just, just to reiterate, like, again, depending on what, like, the fact says, you know, if there's interest, we would dial in our, put our engineering team to work again, dial in the costs, and then go speak to impact investors.
Okay.
Investor, and then really dial in what those terms and conditions would be, and I think we would probably follow up at some point with this group, when we have a better idea of those terms.
About how long does that usually take?
A month.
Okay, yeah. Okay, great. Thanks, thank you so much, thanks for having us. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you, that's your left up, yes, thank you.
Okay, so, under new business also, we have the approval of the certified faculty list.
Yes, so I've got to pass out the list for certified faculty members here at KES. If there is anybody on this list, or not on this list, that you're curious about, we would go into non-public to discuss that. If you're, when you review this list, if you're willing to accept it, I'd ask for a nomination to accept the list as presented, so that we can sign up on contracts and get those out to teachers as early as possible.
Should I be worried, I'm not on the list.
You're not a certified teacher, which rules.
I'm a certified teacher.
But not, and your contract, you are.
That's overusing this one.
I'm just saying.
So, I, okay, so then, shh. Am I asking if anybody here wants to go out to non-public over any of this, or are we ready to, or should we just do it in not, like, just?
If you're ready to, if you don't have any discussion on this?
Okay.
We can just make a motion to accept the list as presented?
Okay, does anybody, well, I'll, I'll make the motion that we can discuss, I, I move that we accept the, the list as presented.
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion about it? Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, same here.
Okay, all right, so, so.
I'm gonna read out some of the names, but other than that.
Okay, all right, so, okay, so, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes.
Excellent, I'll collect that back. Thank you very much, contracts to go up. I have them with me from this letter just handed to you.
Okay, I will do it. Okay, the principles report.
Yes. The first item that I wrote about under positive community culture was just last Friday, and I know Tony had a chance to join us as one of the judges for the Connect Robotics Challenge, which was with our fourth and fifth graders, it was, it was pretty cool.
It was pretty cool.
So we partnered with a pre-ear, which is formerly Thermo Fisher, and they presented a design challenge to the students to be able to clean waste out of waterways, and so using the connects, the students had to build some sort of robot that would meet that challenge. And they were, it was sort of a timed thing, it was like, they had, they could pre-design, but then it was like three, two, one, build, and they had to, to build it on the spot, which was, which was really cool, and then the judges went around with their rubrics and gave feedback to the students. The kids are already talking about, next year when I build, I'm gonna, you know, so we gotta do this again next year, because they're already thinking about their designs and how they can improve their structures for next year, but it was a lot of fun for the kids, for the judges, guest judges, both of you were here too as well.
It was incredibly cool, I mean, it was incredibly cool.
We were trying to think of next year, you know, we're thinking next year, because this is our first go at it, how do we have maybe parents or families off to one side, because they can't be out while the kids are building, because it can't influence any of the building, but it is sort of almost like cake horse, or like, the audience, like, watching them bake in the kitchen kind of thing, and then, yeah.
It was really cool, because the, part of, part of the project was developing blueprints for their design. for their designs. And the blueprints, they had the drawing, they had the, the inventory list. But also there were several cases where a student was out. And so their partners just picked up their blueprints and made the thing that, yeah, it was really cool.
Yeah. And they did the blueprints in art. So, you know, it's a really integrated, it's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Art, STEM, science.
And some of the blueprints were really quite artistic, in fact.
Very creative, a lot of creativity.
Oh, a lot of creativity.
We had, how many, how many teams in total? I'm trying to think. So it was fourth and fifth grade together. And they worked, they did work in teams. I mean, no two designs were even close to being the same, which is really.
Oh, yeah, we had, yeah, there were designs based on Ferris wheels. There were designs, one design had a, had heat, what is it? Heat imaging? What is it?
Yeah.
Heat imaging, yeah. To make sure that fishes, the fish hadn't gotten into the, you know, it was, it was really cool.
Yes. And I also love the public speaking part of that for the students, because there was a component where they had to present to these judges that they've never seen before that they knew were engineers. And that, that public speaking piece is, is so important as well. So, super proud of the kids.
Super proud.
That was really helpful.
Meaningful learning. I just was highlighting our conferences that have been going on for the last couple of weeks, and last week, and then this week, hopefully wrapping up tomorrow. Some of our classes this year are doing student-led conferences, which was a shift for some of, for some of our teachers and our students. You know, the, the kids have a chance to talk about their glows and grows and really reflect on their own learning. And I think you, you participated in a student-led conference last week, didn't you?
Even as a kindergartner, so they totally rocked it.
Yeah, super excited to talk about their learning and share that with their families. So, you know, that was something exciting for, for our kids to be able to share what they know. And then lastly, under health and wellbeing, I was just highlighting the return of our Sky High Skippers.
Yeah.
After a two-year hiatus. So excited to have our jumpers back. They've had such a great performance last week in the gym at CMS. And it's just unbelievable, the stamina that they have.
Oh, my gosh. The, yes. It's, it's like a half hour of jumping. I.
The show was actually an hour and 15 minutes.
I know. I know. It's just insane.
And they're just, their dedication, I mean, these can come to school at 7:30 in the morning twice a week to practice their behind the back crisscross tornadoes, M&Ms, double under can cans, buddy. I mean, like whatever all these moves are called that they learn. And, I mean, it just really shows the dedication of the kids too, to come before school and practice and wanna do better. And just super excited about that. The Conway competition was canceled again, but we are creating our own competition with a team from Newmarket. So the kids will still have one more event that they'll be able to participate in this, this spring for, for jump rope. So that's exciting. And in other jumper of news, and I didn't have this when I submitted my report, but through our Kids Heart Challenge, which they did earlier in February, we raised $2,622.
Wow.
That's from that jump Kids Heart Challenge. So that was also good news. We've got, that's all the super, super healthy kids here. So that's great. Yeah.
Well, I must say, tonight for this meeting, my kids are still jumping. We got practice.
Okay. Um, do we have any old business?
No.
No? Okay. Public input? Okay. Uh, any general correspondence?
I just had one. We received a donation. I think this was a company match that some companies do for, so it was a donation of $360.
Right.
It's from the charities, the foundation from there, the cyber grants. So there's a certain process that we have to go through. We're gonna let Molly talk about that so that this gets put into a deferred account. Correct?
Yeah. So the auditors can, doesn't leave closet, but closet is recommended across all the other districts that all donations would be going, come to the central office in the business office and go into a deferred revenue account. If the donation said why they had to be spent for, we would have to spend it for that.
Yes.
That purpose, but.
This one was not specified.
That is not. So it would be in the general donation account at the central office. And I can take that deposit tomorrow, you know?
Yes, yes.
What is the, what is the deferred revenue account?
So basically it means it won't go back in the tax rate.
Oh, and that's all in the regular budget.
So that we can do that.
Okay, great. Awesome. Thank you. Alright.
You just have to make a motion with Zach.
Oh, okay. I'd really like to know.
I can make a motion to accept the donation.
Okay, great.
I'll second.
Alright. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Hi. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so Molly, business and financials?
So in board pack, you have the financials. So we did have a change of $833 in the budget. So we did have some ups and downs. So the strike service was, was still encumbered, but that's funded by IDEA. So that offset a lot of the other increases, like the operations of plant when the door was fixed and all that. So that offset that. So there's really only changes of $833, but we did get a lot more speciality than anticipated. So that is a relevant to us. So do you have any questions, Molly?
Last month, there was something that you were waiting for, a grant. It was a grant.
Probably FEMA?
Yeah.
So, yes. So we, I have done one submission to FEMA a long time ago for the cooperative and it was very successful. But since then, FEMA has changed a little bit of rules. And so now, and like you ordered masks and stuff, you can get 100% back for that. But for cleaning supplies, which a lot of our stuff is, you have to exceed the budget line.
I see.
We haven't exceeded budget lines yet. So some of the things I've asked for, I've gotten pushed back. So I'm kind of working with Austin Brown, our contact, to see what we can get, remember, so we can't. So anything that was like masks, gloves, and COVID tests.
Yes.
That will come back to us. But mentioning it was like a cleaning supply or that unfortunately no. So we're just still working through that. And hope, hope it's something.
Oh, thank you. Alright, does anybody have any questions about FEMA? Any questions at all from Molly?
And I have to, I need to go ahead and ask too. Do you generally just sign?
I have to sign this. Okay. I have a lot of signing to do after this meeting. That's great. I've been practicing. Uh, hold on. There it is. Okay, committee reports. Josh, you had the policy committee meeting, your first meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, went well?
Yeah, went well. Couple of weeks ago now. It was good discussion. We talked about the indoor air quality policy. And one of the policy committee members did suggest an edit, very small edit. But then the, the first couple of sentences here, or actually the first sentence. So that's just something that I wanted to bring up. Personally, I think it makes sense. I don't think it's overall material to the policy, but I, I do think that it would make sense to make this edit and have that be in our policy.
So it looks like it's specifying, it was specifying, well, why don't you?
Yeah, yeah. So the first sentence here, in order to ensure that all school buildings have adequate indoor air quality, the board directs the superintendent to address methods for minimizing or eliminating emissions from buses, cars, delivery vehicles. So the catch here is that we're talking about buses, vehicles outside, yet we're specifying indoor air quality. So the idea here would be to strike indoor from that first sentence. And then the first sentence would read, buildings have adequate air quality.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to make that change? Is now a good time to do that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, alright, go for it.
So what did I say there?
You would just say you moved to, to change, to strike the word indoor from the first sentence.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to strike indoor from the first sentence of the indoor air quality policy.
Okay, I'll say it. Alright, any discussion? And all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Alright, and then we did discuss two other policies. One of them is the background investigation and criminal history records check. We have a sample policy that differs from our current policy. So we're working through that and considering whether or not there should be revisions made to our policy based on the law.
Okay, great.
And we do have a meeting tomorrow night where we will continue that discussion. We also talked a little bit about the current, or, or fund balances policy, which we're also considering. This one would be a recommended policy. So just talking through that and whether it makes sense to implement that with our policy suite.
Okay.
If you want to, I can.
Yes, uh, yes.
So we do currently have a fund balance policy, but it does not meet the CAF standards. So we have to enhance it. So what we enhance is ours, you have to describe the types of fund balance. So at the end of the year, there's, if you vote to income the funds, that goes into your assigned fund balance. So then there's your restricted fund balance. And then, uh, go on the fiber. And then the last one's unassigned fund balance. Your unassigned fund balance is looking through, returning to the tax rate. The policy also has to address, some districts have 2.5 or 5% retention rule, which means that some school districts can vote to retain up to 2.5 or 5. Usually 2.5 and a large change to 5, that's why I said either board. None of the SAU 16 school districts have that. If we did want that in the future, we'd have to go on the ballot.
Can you say what it is again?
So at the end of the year, you know how all of our money goes into the tax rate?
Yeah.
If you want on the ballot, you could put a warrant article to say that you could retain up to 5%. It's to stabilize the tax rate.
Oh, okay.
So in the COVID, when we had a large fund balance, you could have retained 5% if we have that ability. So that it could be used to carry over to stabilize the tax rate.
Got it, okay.
So none of the SAU 16 districts have that currently. So the whole unassigned fund balance goes back. So in this policy, I just addressed that, because I work with policy. That it, we don't have that. So it all goes back in the tax rate. So really, it's just defining the different categories of fund balance and then stating that we don't utilize the 2.5 or 5% retention.
Okay.
And spending prioritization, saying that you spend the, your assigned fund balance before unassigned. And.
Yeah, okay.
That's the whole policy.
Okay.
Just really just bringing it up to standard, put your, the policy up to standard.
Correct.
Yeah, thanks for that, Molly. I forgot, I forgot all the skinny in that one.
Okay, great. Safety and security.
Is that, are you, is that?
Yes, that's it.
Um, so actually interesting, it was a good meeting. We just had a meeting. Lots of good discussions happening. There was, that background check aspect was brought up. And actually for myself, I thought that was an interesting conversation of when, who are we doing background checks on? And what is actually the policy and what is, what are we actually doing in practice? And they often don't match. And so just kind of, or there's content, not, there's kind of a discussion of what qualifies as.
Okay.
Someone who's going to be with students, with students alone, you know, if, are they ever really supervised 100% while they're here? So it was, it was a good discussion where do we need to take another look at it? I don't know if that was part of what they were kind of looking at in the policy. So for example, if a parent comes in to read to a classroom, they're not background checked. But is that parent always with the teacher? What if they have to go to the bathroom? What if they use the bathroom with the students? So there's some questions around what does that policy look like?
Interesting, okay.
What does it look like in practice? So, cause so for someone like a substitute teacher, even for a contractor like myself, when I work with school districts, I have to get background checked and fingerprinted. Sometimes even for districts that I don't go in personally. So there's some discussion there.
Yeah, we also talked about like a soccer coach or an athletics coach. Now, you know, what does a break-in service mean? Does a person need to come in and go through the, you know, the full background check again or not?
And I don't know if who pays for it is another question.
Yeah.
Is a district's responsibility to pay for it? And is the person's responsibility, volunteer's responsibility to pay for it?
Oh, interesting.
It does cost money to get that all taken care of. And so, so about that, I'm glad that, obviously that was carried over into the policy committee. What else did we talk about? We talked, the district is doing some really great things, is leading the state in the, some of, is it the BIT?
BIT team.
BIT team. Being a ground dimension team. They're still working on some of the case, but definitely that's because we are one of the only school districts doing it. And it's a really cool service that we're able to offer. Kids that are having a difficult time to get services quickly and kind of wraparound services and other systems of care.
Is this training existing employees or is it training new people? Okay.
It's existing employees, yep. And they, but that, there's the outside agencies involved. Once that phone call from the BIT team of the district is called, other outside agencies.
That's real cool. That's great.
So that was good. Then there was also a large discussion on body cameras and the use of body cameras with SROs, school resource officers. And so even though they didn't ask Becky, our SRO has a body cam.
Yeah, I mean, the Kansas Police Department has had body cameras for several years. But there wasn't a member of the police there. So I didn't feel like they could speak for the Kansas Police Department. But it's just, just something new that they're navigating with just officers having them at the middle school and high school, because they do have officers in the building every day. So they're just running through those policies.
Okay.
And whether or not, what it looks like when, so they wouldn't be on all the time. They only get turned on when there's a call to action, which essentially the police officer who comes, police officer.
Yes.
In a moment. And that, the technology is, it's fascinating. They can really blur out, they can pick a face and blur out everything else. They can, so there's a lot of good that comes out of those, that ability to have that monitoring. But it sounds like it's not an immediate, they had to budget it in, get the cameras, get the training. So it's, it's a long term. I think they're just kind of introducing this concept.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it.
They talked a bit about the mobile crisis units, which are new to not just schools, but just about some families in general. Yeah. It's a new resource for everyone. So again, I think they're working through some of the case. So there's been sort of mixed reviews of responses depending on who's responding. So, and then just working through the communication of notifying local police departments when the mobile crisis unit has been deployed somewhere. Rich Kane reported out on some of the tabletops that he's doing with schools. We actually have our schedules for tomorrow morning. So Chief Kane will be here and.
This is like a drill?
Yep. And just put a scenario on the table for our response team to sort of navigate through our own plans. Chief choose planning, not attending, not tomorrow, tomorrow meeting as well.
He loves an emergency plan. He loves a plan.
Yeah. And, yeah, I think the last thing we just dropped off was, yeah, that was, yeah, that was pretty much it. Okay, great. It was a long meeting.
It was.
It was a long one.
It was a long one. But there was the get it, so like, yeah. Kept us happy.
Okay, great. So, thank you. I don't have anything to report for the board of selection.
So we backed up to Seabrook.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just because of the Seabrook drill.
Yeah. I was gonna actually address that here, but.
Oh, it's not, yeah, whatever.
It was a community event.
It was a community event. Yeah, so we had a, every, every two years FEMA and Homeland Security Committee, I don't know who's conducting it, I know they're both involved, conduct a Seabrook drill for all of the communities that are within the whatever mile radius. And so we, we, we both got to be there. And so it's the shorts and be part of the drill. And, yeah, I actually haven't heard about it, but I think we did very well. So that was, that was, that's always interesting. And, yeah, that was.
That was my third one that I've done, I think, since I've been here, as far as that high level with like the people watching and grading.
Yeah, that was the great.
So the stress levels were a little higher because we were all being graded on this one.
Yeah, so they do, so what happens is they do three drills in the year. And the first one is just like, it's like an open book test. And then the second one, you know, the, the officials kind of sit back, but they're there to answer questions. And then this one is actually graded. And, but, yeah, it was.
It's good to prac, I mean, it's just, it's good to practice your response plan.
Well, yeah, and you know. Uh, yeah, it, it's actually, these things have made me feel a lot better about living so close to Seabrook at all. Because my understanding now is that if anything goes wrong, but the very shortest amount of time between the thing going wrong and people knowing about it and radiation actually being released is 22 hours. So we go through what is probably a week's worth of action in four hours. So it's very, very, very accelerated. But, yeah, and it just makes you feel like good that there's a, there's a plan. But, you know, I'll say this here for the dozens of people attending this meeting. It's good, you know, it was brought up, it's really good to have a plan with your family for if the town ever needs to be evacuated for any reason. Or if the power goes out for a couple of weeks, you know, what we're gonna do. It's just something to talk about and to know. And then one of the select board members brought up a very interesting point, that if there is, and I'm just gonna stay here, because I'm trying to tell them, rooting out, if there is an evacuation ever, there's a, there's a, a central meeting point. We go to Manchester High School, it's what do they call it, Reception Center. A lot of people would just think, I'm not gonna go to Reception Center, I'm just gonna go to my aunt's house in Vermont. You know, we'll be safe there. But what he pointed out was that if you go to Reception Center and you get registered there, later on, if there's any sort of insurance claim, that is how the insurance knows that you. Yeah, no, yeah, exactly. They know that you took the right steps, that you. that you weren't putting yourself into unnecessary danger. And, yeah. So it's just interesting to know.
Yeah, I've seen the packets or the big brochure that's come through in the middle of the past couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think they're doing the calendar. No, they're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely like a good, a great resource. Obviously, mine's a little bit dark now, which is a little uneasy to think about at first, please.
Well, but that's.
It's always good to have a plan.
That's the point is that it's actually, it's, it's, it's really well managed and, and it's.
And from the school's perspective, um, our first goal is to get the kids back home with their, you know, with their parents and then as a family.
Yeah.
You know, decide what you'd have.
I mean, it's like multiple different attempts to get the kids back home with their families. So it's not like, it's not like anybody's like throwing them, taking them, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's great. Um.
Strangest of first three episodes. I think I'm well done. I can handle it.
Don't, don't get it.
Okay, all right. Good to know.
I mean, it's really well done, but.
Okay, so, uh, the superintendent evaluation committee, we are meeting this week um, to compile and aggregate the data from the, um, survey sent out to building principals and the SLT staff. And we will be presenting that in a non-public meeting to the joint board on Monday. Um, and the Kensington School Study update, uh, or the school study, we have met once since our last board meeting and we are, uh, it, it's, it's, I, it's a fantastic group.
It's the best committee we have.
I love this committee. And we, what we're trying to do right now is, um, set up a visit to Gilmet Elementary School in Lawrence, Mass. Because they have made pretty significant changes to their schedule and they have seen fantastic results with regard to test scores, student success, like other different areas of student success, morale, everything, you know. So I wrote an email to the principal and did not hear back. And so I spoke with Mrs. Curley and said, you know, just on the off chance this person doesn't have a good, you know, taste in their mouth with regards to board members, do you think that as a teacher you could reach out? And so she said she's gonna reach out. So, so we'll see. We haven't heard back yet. But we're hoping to be able to go make a little site visit, ask a lot of questions.
Question on, like, changes that you were saying to the schedule. Like, are we talking like timing versus early, late in the day or?
We don't know yet. We're, we, we don't know yet. We are.
Questions.
That's, yeah, we have a lot of questions that we need to, we need to ask. We're just trying to figure out how to update how we do school so that it actually works and functions better. Because the whole point is that, you weren't here when we were talking about this. So the whole point is that, um, the, the, what is, what is required and expected of teachers and of students has changed dramatically, but the school day hasn't. And so teachers are, oh, around the country, this is a, this is a, a totally.
This is not a Kensington.
It's not a Kensington problem, yes. It's a universal thing. Teachers are, are, are finding that they are completely strapped. They're not having enough time to prep adequately, to plan adequately, to collaborate.
Yeah.
They just, they, they need, um, they need more in terms of time, um, just time. And so, so we were looking, we're looking at what other schools have done in America and what sorts of different ideas they've had, what changes they've made, and we're gonna.
And, and so it seems like based on something that this Lawrence school has figured it out and, and they're showing improvement based on.
They've figured out something that works for them. There's, there's a big difference though in the size of the eleme, of an elementary school in Lawrence, Mass than there is here. So, so they can do, they have certain things that they can do that we can't do. Um, so we just wanna see what we can. If, if they've already been through this process, there's a lot of information and, and knowledge there, so, yeah. Yeah, just gathering information and, okay. Uh, any people related matters?
There is none.
Okay, uh, any personnel?
There is a personnel matter. I sent you today a quick nomination form. Um, that guarantee did an amazing job interviewing for Miss Bobbers retirement for next year. And, and I was more than impressed with the candidates and the process they went through. Had the opportunity to meet the two finalists yesterday, yesterday. Um, and I don't know how they made a decision, um, because they were fantastic. And I think that's a credit to the staff and what they do. Um, however, the candidate that was selected is, uh, fantastic. Um, it's a known candidate. It's someone during their conversations said, I, I really wanna come home because this is what they consider their home. And I think it's a fantastic choice. So they know if you have any, any questions. And if not, then I'd love Becky to be able to welcome, uh, the newest teacher into, to the family. So I don't know if you have any other questions that we can answer.
I know, I have experience with this person. I'm thrilled with the, with the nomination. So I, I don't want to, either of you have any questions?
So if there's no questions, I ask.
Oh, you didn't see it? Okay.
No, I, yeah.
Is that, that understood?
I mean, I saw it when it came in here, but.
Okay.
I'm sure.
All right, so, um, I, I'll move that we accept, would we accept the nomination for the new second grade teacher starting next year?